Members. Is it just, are those just attendees? Okay, everybody's here. Can Jackie, Nathan, or Daryl in Zoom land hear me? Can you just give a reaction, come off mute? Or send a homing pigeon? We just want to make sure you can hear us.
I can hear you.
There you go, perfect. We're gonna go ahead and we're not waiting on anybody else, right, Amy? We can get started?
We sure can.
We will call this evening's meeting to start. The City of Carlton Planning Commission. Today's Monday, October 9, 2023. It is 6:00 PM. We are here in person at the Provisional City Offices and hearing via Zoom. Our first element tonight is a call to order. Ms. Amy Amerson will give us a roll call.
Okay. Commissioner Gek, are you in attendance?
I am, all right.
Commissioner Fernandez Madrid?
All right.
Commissioner Terrell?
I'm here.
Commissioner Nordstrom? Your Chair Stuart?
I'm present.
Commissioners Amaya and Bandy are absent.
Excellent. First item on our agenda tonight is the approval of meeting minutes from August 14th, which happens to be the last time that I was here. They are starting, or they are found starting at page two of our meeting packet. And they are two pages long with the bulk of it happening on the first page. Is there anybody who sees an amendment or modification to these that we would like to include? Hearing none, seeing none, does anybody want to move to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Fernandez Madrid moves to approve in a second.
Second.
Second from Susie Terrell. All in favor?
Fine.
In person, this is delightful. Looks like unanimous approval, I trust. That the meeting minutes from August 14 have been approved as written in page two and three in the packet and will be signed and approved accordingly. This time, we would open the floor for citizen comments for a two or three minute period for anything that is not on the agenda this evening. We have a few items that may have some public comment, but would, we don't have anybody here in person, but would Jackie, Nathan, or Daryl care to make any public comment on anything that is not on our agenda this evening? If that changes, we can always open up another opportunity following Commissioner comments, which is number five in tonight's agenda. But with that said, we have two major topics to discuss tonight. First is a phasing, an updated phasing proposal with respect to the pending JR3 or JR Meadows 3 phasing, as well as a proposed type 2 process that, both of which will be presented to us by our city planner. And at this point, I will open the floor to you, Mr. White.
Okay. I think we lost audio there. It's like you guys are on mute.
I apologize. I had, I had turned the mute off on me, not thinking and not recognizing that that's probably used for the whole room. Can you hear if he's speaking from where he is? Give it a test.
Scott? Yes, we can hear you again.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Are you able to hear Mr. White as well?
Yes.
Okay, apologies. I turned it off just so I didn't clear my throat. I will leave it on. That's on my ear, if you don't mind restarting.
No, no problem at all, okay. And for those in Zoom land there, yeah, so just again referencing the memo dated October 2nd that the planning commission has as part of the packet there, just providing background and summary of what we received from the applicant of JR Meadows 3 subdivision. The planning commission approved the subdivision for JR Meadows 3 on May 17th this year. And we had an opportunity to read the memo there. Really, this is a limited proposal to introduce something that was not made part of the proposal and the record on May 17th. It is to introduce phasing, limited to just two phases and limited to the boundary as shown as an attachment to the memo. We have the applicant's letter explaining the phasing proposal. And then we have as exhibit B is the actual boundary between the phases. If you had an opportunity to see that, there's a blue dashed line that shows the division between the two phases. And then also exhibit C of the memo is the notice of decision that was issued after the planning commission meeting there. It has a number of the conditions that you may have been familiar with. And so the commission voted on. And what, just more addition, additional background here, when staff was approached with this proposal to introduce phasing, the first thing we did is kind of look at the code and see if the code have a modification process to make minor modifications of the decision. No, it does not. So what does the code say? One, it calls attention to the final plat process, and it says that the chair is to sign the final plat. And in doing so, the chair signs on behalf of the planning commission, making sure that the final plat is in substantial conformance with the preliminary plat that the commission approved. So that is the key part that we put in the kind of verbatim in there. The item C there, that was one we were kind of thinking, well, eventually the chair is asked to sign the plat. And is this something that the chair may have some reservations on acting again on behalf of the commission in review? So the idea was, let's bring this to the planning commission as a non-hearing item. We don't have a process for it. I mean, the opposite would be to notify, go through the same process and have a very limited hearing focused solely to this item. In the staff report are four bullet items there. There is no change in the number of units. There is no change in the size, configuration, the streets. There is no change to conditions that are sought through this request for introducing a phasing proposal. One of the things that the city engineer and I did, especially this exhibit C has a markup of what staff feels must be accomplished in the first phase. And so that's sort of the way that this division work. If the applicant had informed staff of a phasing proposal, made that clear as the record, we would probably have things a little bit different, but it seems to work out. So we are looking at this in a way that, yes, it can work out. At the same time, it's appropriate to bring back to the planning commission. And so what we have tonight is, I think, a couple of applicant representatives, certainly Jackie Herbert is with AKS Engineering and Forestry. She's available to answer questions if you have certain questions of the applicant about the phasing proposal. I think things are summed up fairly well here. And the letter or written statement that was prepared by AKS, that exhibit A, pretty much says, hey, yeah, we're, we're still in agreement with the conditions. We will execute them. And also that they will do both phases within the timeframe acknowledged, the 2.5 years as described in the, in the notice of decision. That makes sense. Anyways, I, yeah, happy to answer questions about this topic. And, and also Jackie is happy to answer questions as well.
My first question would be, has city council given any input to you or to the other city team members on any exposure possibly for the city or for the developer for a combination? Have they received any messages to that extent?
It was an internal discussion with the city engineer and city planners, in addition to staff. It was not a council.
Okay.
And council is not party to the decision. It says, planning commission's decision was not appealed. So, yeah, it is really just for bringing it back to the decision-making body, which is planning.
I'm just not familiar with the intricacies of how this relates with the overall state land use laws and whether or not there's any protections that the city should undertake just in case there's a, a third party that, that might be involved, that may be a moot point, but.
I would, I mean, I don't know. It had, has the city attorney needed to pipe in or speak to this?
Yeah, I don't know if it's been reviewed by the city attorney. I know that city engineer, I think it was more the mechanics of this working out. And Gordon and I talked about it at length and kind of felt that, yeah, this, this can work. And, and it was mostly to, again, those bullet points. Is there something here that a third party or those that would receive notice should be aware of as far as what has changed other than the phasing of this, this application? So the fact that they're not changing the, the road length, I mean, a lot of the same conditions still apply. I think there might be something about the trees there because that was sort of, well, wait a minute, there was a person that wrote something to the, the letter, was concerned about the trees. All right, is phase two gonna be starting? No, it's, it's not. That will be second, and that's where the trees are at the same time. Phase two is where you may have some grading and/or just some staging of construction equipment. So let's make sure, so there's kind of that notation in here that, well, all right, let's make sure that, that fencing is in place for, for phase one. And so the applicant though is acknowledging, yeah, we can, but we can do that. And we'll see the construction plan come as administrator of review. Gordon will require barricades and other things that are more engineering related. And so we think it's feasible. I think that that's, we don't see the need for notification. If it were, if property owners are notified, again, we would write up a notice that says, hey, this is limited to phasing and probably provide a, a plan that shows that and say, this is what the limits of discussion would be about. And so, so anyways, that's what we have here as far as action from the commission. I mean, this is, I know it's kind of going off the grid of what we have in the code, but it's sort of absent language in the code too. And so it is a matter of whether, you know, I think I had something at the fourth, is a question of whether you, or with, with the staff finding that the proposal to introduce phasing conforms substantially to the preliminary plan as approved by the city, giving the chair the comfort to sign the plat, which would be phase one and then a separate plat for phase two.
My only other additional thing, and I can kind of blend in with the next subject when we're talking about possible changes for the CDC, is thinking about maybe adding a modification provision for an abbreviated hearing. I know we can't use it with a pending application or the pending plan that's before us, but this may be a really good template opportunity for us to think about if there's mirror jurisdictions where these kind of things would happen more often. This is completely understandable, dealing with, I think the words they use are market absorption or macroeconomic factors. So it's completely understandable, this type of phasing. I'd open the floor for any other questions from.
A couple of issues. One, I just want to make the clarification, the trees as you term them were actually discussed in great detail among our commission, and it was our concern that those be protected. And then the second thing has to do with the signing off by the chair. So if this project is deemed complete in two and a half years, our terms have been abbreviated. So possibly Anthony won't be the chair, could be new people coming in, what have you. What, what if Fanny, and this is why I really wish Tyler were here, would there be in terms of legal liability to you or any future chair if there were third-party actions? I'm a little concerned about that.
Yeah. I don't know if I, yeah, having Tyler might answer that. Yeah, I don't know what the risk, it doesn't seem, I mean, I can't speak as a city attorney. It doesn't seem like there's much of a risk here. You know, the concern about the, the trees, we have a record of that. You know, yeah, right terms do, and all of a sudden, that might be a new chair and.
Well, it might even serve as a disincentive for somebody to be chair if they felt that they were acquiring some legal liability.
Yeah, yeah. Certainly, we have this record of a, of a meeting in the minutes and everything else. And so if there is a change, I think it would be staff's responsibility to say, yeah, here's the background, and it did come to the planning commission, and the planning commission favored it. And, and here you go. So, you know, that, that was kind of, at least that was the focus of, of this in writing this and sort of looking at, wow, there, there is a checkpoint. And, and that was communicated to AKS as well. And I don't know if, you know, this is one of those things too, if you have a question for AKS, I don't, it sounds like it's more driven to staff.
Well, it's a, you know, I wouldn't say it's a misgiving, but it's a concern. And I think, you know, for all the reasons I just said, without having to repeat it, it, it could be a disincentive. I'm fairly certain, and maybe Shannon could comment on this, she herself is city manager, all the city councillors are elected, they have legal liability coverage as members of that body. I don't believe any of us do. And if I were sitting in my co-chairs, I, I think I'd be a little anxious about putting my name on something that could potentially open me to legal liability. Should there be a problem? I'm not saying there is or there would be, but maybe we just need to review what is the, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking that the intention is to add integrity of the planning commission to the process, but then further in, you're saying that if there's an appeal, basically it ends with the planning commission and it's circumvented from going further, so the city council. So I don't know if we're reducing the layers or adding unnecessary complexity. So I'm just pondering.
Yeah, that's a good way to sum, sum it up there. Certainly, we feel comfortable that phasing is allowed by the code. I think it's been done before, at least I think there's a precedent for it in the city. And there's a hint that it's allowed, the code doesn't say, yeah, phasing is, is, it's okay. It just sort of says, yeah, if, if you do so, you, you identify it. And so there is that, that part of the code that says, disclose that upfront. I have, you know, I, I think that the chair summed it up well as far as kind of what today is, this is kind of, I, I see phasing all the time. And it's in a lot of neighborhoods, I'm surprised they didn't introduce it in the beginning too, because that's often, that's how you get the return on the dollar for all of the capital improvements that, that are out there. This is a fairly large project that's, yeah, that the economy goes under, all of a sudden the improvements are up.
Well, that's, that's exactly what happened with Carlton Crest. They had, you know, a huge sweeping development, and then a weight happened and crashed, a big recession, and he couldn't give those houses away, a bunch of them became rentals. You know, there's, there's external forces that could come into play, but, you know, I don't want to speak for Anthony, he can certainly do that on himself. But if I were sitting in that chair, I think I'd be a little anxious.
I did have a question for AKS or to the applicant, I've seen AKS, what, what is the timeframe with respect to the next, is there a determinative point? Is, do you need to have this information or this determination done today? Because in two weeks, you have Mario and Luigi's plumber service coming in, and it's going to depend on phase one and two? Or are we looking at two or three months to where, you know, if we, if we give an action item for the city attorney, just as a CYA for the planning commission and/or confab with the city council, make sure that if we are, if we're doing something that's extra code, not that it's extra legal or unlawful, but something that is not contemplated by the initial plan, you know, would, would the applicant be in a position where this is a delay today of 30 days or 60 days so that we can get those necessary approvals? Follow up with the mayor and the rest of city council and make sure that, to the extent possible, there is a parallel, you know, path that we're all taking? Is that, is that something that's going to be impactful for the developer?
Hi, can you guys hear me okay?
Sure, Kim.
Yeah, this is Jackie at AKS. I think 30 days would probably be sufficient. We are wanting to get started on our construction plans to get those into the city, but I believe that 30 days would probably be sufficient, probably be fine. I don't think it's going to be detrimental. The applicant is on the line. Daryl, do you concur? I don't know if he's on audio.
Yeah, hey, Daryl Smith here. Yeah, we would like the decision obviously sooner rather than later, just for the parade of, you know, engineering approvals and getting that done, because we do intend to continue to move forward from one phase right into the next. It's just based on the market absorption rate and being able to plan for that as we move forward. So helping AKS perform and meet our timelines is what this is all about. Yeah, we need to take 30 days, 30 days.
Mayor Watkins, do you think that's enough time, at least on your end, to maybe discuss this with members of the city council? Perhaps as an agenda item, but it's just to get an overall pulse that this sort of.
I was just trying to think about timing, because if we're talking about 30 days from today, that's a little bit close for the council, but we should still be okay.
We'll also have Tyler weigh in. I mean, that's the person whose opinion I'm.
I think it's most important that the city attorney weigh in, again, that this was not appealed to council. We're taking it back to the board that approved the, the application. And so we want to make sure that we check in with Tyler. And in reference to your question, and that is that in the scope and course of your duties as a board, you are protected by insurance. But we could have Tyler weigh in, whether or not that would be taken to council. I would trust the city attorney about whether the process, because we are taking, this is not an appeal, we are taking it back to the board that approved the application.
And perhaps instead of having a formal confab with the city council, it could be one of, are we starting next month? Are, are, are assignments to the city council where the planning commissioner will attend?
Yeah.
Is, is it starting this month or next month?
I think it started the month.
It's the nature of having new baby dad brain. So whomever is the assigned person, I think that would be a good element just to let them know as part of just an upward informational. And then we don't necessarily have to worry about giving, making the city council, as you said, procedurally, it's not necessary, but to keep them informed directly from the planning commission. Who is, I could take a look at my notes and see who's next month unless you guys know. November 7 is Amaya, and December 5 is Amaya. So if we could just follow up with her and let her know, maybe send her a copy of the, the video here, so she's got some context of what, what needs to be reported up. Our next meeting is going to be roughly this time next month. And then, then your meeting, it comes a week after us or the week preceding?
Week preceding.
The week preceding, so. So you'll, we would have one more meeting before, we know our resolution here. So ultimately, at least Amaya could report November 7th what's going on, and then the resolution of it in December to the city council, just so that you remain informed. And then we give Tyler 30 days to get back in touch with us. Is that a reasonable plan? I didn't mean to, of course, all that, were there any questions or thought process?
I actually have a question.
Yeah.
Yeah. So my concern is with the drainage. I recall very vividly that there could be detention required for the subdivision. And my concern is if we do it, if they do it as phased, then the drainage is kind of figured out for phase one. And then phase two, they realize, wow, we could make more money if we slightly change or add more permeable surface. And then all of a sudden, whereas detention wasn't required or was required for phase one, I just see that drainage could be something that gets changed if it's not considered as a whole piece. So I don't want there to be any chance that the whole subdivision is not considered as one unit. So I don't want phase one, I don't want it to be approved, like, I don't want the engineer to say, oh, yeah, it looks good, that's probably not very much water. And he won't say it like that because he's an engineer, but I'm paraphrasing, that's not much water, and probably phase two won't be much more. And then there's some minor changes in phase two that add permeable surface and not big changes, not like 20 more houses, but just enough that if we haven't planned for it, then all of a sudden, we did need detention. And then it's like, oh, darn it, we didn't do that detention, it's too late now. And that's my big concern.
Well, once again, they, I can't speak for Jordan, Gordon neither as a city engineer, but he, he did feel comfortable about this and has had discussions with AKS's engineers. I don't know if AKS had, wants to say something to them. There will be some interim things in, in place for it. So there is, the city engineer has the ability to look at the construction plan and say, okay, cleanouts here, drainage, temporary drainage swale here, this sort of thing. So the plan still stays the way it was engineered. I know you just have a phasing plan, but it's still.
Right, but my concern is as they're doing the grading, which they do, sometimes they end up with a little more fill than they thought, or a little more cut than they thought. And then it's all of a sudden, it's, oh, it's as built. And so, so then the drainage changes slightly. And, you know, that's my big concern, if we do it as phasing.
I think we can, I think one of the things that maybe we didn't make clear in our letter, and I probably should have done a better job of that, is that we are intending to bring the construction plans for both phases, so a holistic plans in for the city engineer to review at the same time. So he'll have plans for both phases along with the stormwater management for the entire project all at the same time. So he will be looking at it holistically and not in piecemeal.
Sure. And I understand, I understand that piece, and I read that, actually, that was clear to me. But my concern is that, you know, if you spread this construction out over time and phase one happens, gets built, everybody's happy with that, and then things just change. I mean, you're stretching it out over a longer time, and the market changes, the, you know, the, and then they come back to a new planning commission and say, well, gee, you know, like, we actually wanted to do it like this, would you give us a variance to do it like this? And then all of a sudden, we already have drainage, stormwater management in place, and then it's like piecemealing new stormwater drainage. So I guess my concern for, as a commission, is I would like to have Gordon, also with the city attorney, to weigh in on that, because I want it to be really clear that stormwater is important. And if, I, I don't want more water in crawl spaces for houses that are bought with properties. And I don't want more water onto the school playing field that's already a wet area. So that's a big concern. So I would appreciate if we could have Gordon weigh in and, and give some assurances somehow that once the storm drainage is decided, that maybe he even comes back and lets us know if there's going to be detention required. Because I actually, that's something I really want to hear from, directly from the engineer.
And Jackie, Commissioner Madrid, I just have a quick question. And I'm not comparing JK to Carlton Crest at all, it's just my lived experience here. And as I referenced earlier, it was, you know, put in, and then a weight happened, and things just sat for a while. So in the overall plan for this phase development, based on what I saw and experienced with Carlton Crest, you put in your utilities, you put in your underground utilities, your sewer, your water, your fiber optics, or whatever you got, paving of the streets, is that going to be one contiguous thing? And then the houses will be built in phased? Or will the streets, the sewers, all of those things tie in in phases? Is that a clear question?
Yeah, thank you for asking. Even though we are intending to have the construction plans be done collectively so that city engineer can see all the pieces, though, they are intending for the infrastructure, the streets, the utilities, franchise utilities to be done in the phases. So the.
In phases, okay.
Correct, yeah. So the infrastructure will be done ahead of the homes that will come after.
Sure, sure. Yeah, that was my question, is if, if everything that you just mentioned will be done.
Basically, that's right, that's right.
It was not for Carlton Crest, and it was just giant fields with paved streets.
Yeah.
It was not for Carlton Crest and it was just giant fields with paved streets and street lamps. And it was weird for years. It sat that way.
Definitely one of the advantages for somebody to be able to phase the construction is they can break it up like that.
Well, I just want to weigh in that, you know, I think based on my fellow commissioners concerns, I, I think it would be very, you know, prudent to have the city attorney weigh in with ever, you know, his reassurances are to us. It doesn't sound like thirty days is going to be egregious. And I don't know if you're ready for a motion, but there might be other questions.
Anything else from the city team? Just to comment to that. It sounds like it. I don't think I can originate a motion, but if I were, I would say something along the lines of we propose or we request, I think we need to make a motion because they're not doing anything. But the idea is that we're all in agreement. The action item. Thank you for the excellent source. City attorney provide us an opinion on the modification request in the context of specifically AKS here. And then if possible, you know, in conjunction with our city planner to give us some, some options if we wanted to present this to the advisory committee for the CDC update, which is meeting again, I just saw in a week or so.
I'm sorry.
The CDC advisory team is meeting on the nineteenth. So this is a timely circumstance that hopefully can be implemented as part of a code change. Commissioner Maya will be given a copy of this video and just a brief update to have them present, have her present to the city council. This specific issue is part of the report at the next city council meeting, November seven, we will meet again the next week of November, we'll follow up with city planner, city attorney on this specific issue and make further determinations at that point. And then after that, Commissioner Maya will make a report of the decision or determination of how we're moving forward as a planning commission on this point. And then Susie had also requested our engineer either provide a written or in person responses, some concerns regarding drainage and detention to avoid any questions where the infrastructure may not be completely done on the front side so that it's to everybody's neutral approval.
Yeah, and I actually would prefer if Gordon could either be at the meeting somehow, either he's usually remote or in person. Because I would actually, I mean, there may be questions. So if he just provides written, then we may not be able to ask the questions that we need to ask.
Do you think there'll be an issue for him zooming in?
I will have to check with his schedule.
Okay, we'll follow up on that to the best of our ability.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else on that point, I think we can move on to Mr. White's second dance on the dance floor regarding this excellent color printed proposal regarding a type two process addition for development code update. And Mr. White, back to you, sir.
Oh, I I put together a PowerPoint presentation. So you have, have the printout there. That's great. Thank you Amy for doing that. I don't know how many are remaining on the virtual land there, but I will so okay, I'm going to make a reference here first to another memo. And yeah, this one dated October ninth and the subject being update briefing on the, on a new proposed type two process, which I'll be describing here. I'll build a next slide then. So it's really the last two chapters of the development codes that have applications listed and procedures associated with those applications. It, yes, divisions six and seven. And I want to answer the question, why is this topic or, or a separate work session? Why bring it to the for the planning commission? And it's really my idea. If you don't like me bringing this, this, blame me, it's fine. I, I do want to explain the, the need for, for doing this. One tonight is to give you an overview of a very long couple of divisions of code there. When you, you will see the full code presented tonight, but we have it going next week. It's when they've scheduled a advisory committee meeting and certainly a lot of changes in, in the form here of strike throughs and, and bold highlights indicating what's proposed to be removed and what is proposed to be added. Not an easy read is that this kind of makes there for some people. It's kind of difficult to digest all of that stuff going on. And there will be some in the margins explanation of things as well. But that's kind of one of the things that provide an overview of what we have in store. It's important. As we've given a lot of time to these, these two divisions, the other bullet there, statutes and rules have changed pertaining to the process. And you have staff and the consulting team very mindful of these statutes and rules. What you'll see particularly in this two divisions, but other chapters as well, a lot of references to ORS and NOAR and that's that. And and it is an audit of changes that need to be made to ensure compliance with rule and statute. There is some grant money available for changes that implement earlier today. Shannon and I were talking, we're kind of got our fingers crossed that the grant money is available. We're not absolutely certain about that. But that is through the Department of Land Conservation and Development. They were allocated a lot of money to be given to cities for rule implementation, mostly for, for housing code updates, but also for all streamlining review and some other things that I'll talk about.
Scott, I'm sorry to interrupt. Could you clarify? Is that a grant that's been applied for already or is it?
Been applied, okay. For and and we feel confident about it. Getting some, there are likely some strings attached that we, we want to find out and see those in, in writing and people planning commission know about those. I have a feeling I know what they are, but I don't want until I get to see that in writing. I don't want to
Do you have a timeline?
A timeline, yeah. The end of next year is when the, the expectation would, would be for
It's a year out.
Okay, yeah, for, for ensuring. And so more on that. We feel pretty confident about it, but I can't say, yeah, we got it. But yeah, the last bullet, divisions six and seven, they relate to other divisions. That's a key thing for me as we spend a lot of time in developing the code, the way you'll see it in a draft form. And if there are some things that you say, oh, oh, wait a minute, no, no, no. Yeah, it will, will cause a reaction elsewhere in other divisions. So this, that's a quick overview of why bring it, try to bring these to parts of the code to, to your attention for work session next. So you'll hear the word clear and objective standards. If you haven't heard of already, it's a very common topic. The city attorney probably say this. And it's all in response to various provisions that are shown here. Key ones from Oregon revised statutes and Oregon administrative rules. They kind of mirror each other in the statutes during the laws and then the rule more of implementation. And so, you know, the, the key thing there is, yeah, that, that a local governments may and may adopt and apply only clear and objective standard condition procedures and specifically mentions housing there. And so that's, that's a lot of what you'll see as far as changes that, that are proposed by the consultant and staff are reflective of these two provisions. I got down there. That's my note on the bottom there can still require a public hearing. Statute and rule do not preclude that. So I'll make sure that that's clear is that I'm gonna we'll go over a, a new type two process that we are proposing that would not necessarily involve a public hearing. So it's not that we would be doing this, removing a public hearing element from the code in response to these things. It just kind of says, hey, it is procedural. Although it's kind of a nebulous thing, it says unreasonable, I think somewhere in there. Yeah, unreasonable cost or delay. I will leave some future land use board of appeals cases and various case law that will come forward in response to this. Next slide, we'll, we'll keep going. So part of your packet of materials. This is my summation of what the current draft shows in a very nutshell form here. This is exhibit A of the memo. And it's a table summary of proposed changes to divisions six and seven. And yeah, basically I, I take in a breakdown of types one, two, three, and four, and shown you the the various applications that the code has, some ones that would be introduced, but mostly clarifications of existing. And it's sort of indicating where they would move, will be updated or moved. I, I just decided that this might be easier here to break this down. So what you have in the next series of slides is just taking the first one here, type one, the ministerial review. You can see some of those there that, that you probably don't see come to your attention as Amy, I think processes the majority of, of those. Very limited in scope. And the key with this application is that it is all clear, based on clear and objective criteria. It is, if it fits in this category is again, one, very limited in scope and two, must be a clear and objective criteria to, to review. But somewhat strange are a couple of applications, existing ones that don't fit the mold of clear and objective review. The, the minor variance were proposed, we proposed removing that A there and putting it into the new proposed type two process. It, it variants involves some discretion. It is, variance is a deviation from the clear and objective standards. So so it doesn't fit the mold. There's a couple of them, like fence permit is something that exists only in name. There is no criteria. There is no permit. You won't find it described any of their standards for fences, but there's no permit per se. You don't come to the city to necessarily get one or there's no fee or thing, anything of that. So the, the thing is to just get rid of it. If it, if it operates well, Amy's telling people what the standards are. There's not any violations. So floodplain permit is one that probably not processed very often. This was not much development actually in the floodplain, but if there is any fill or alteration, this we're proposing to move it down to type two so that there's notification to property owners. Minor conditional use is another one that it involves a little bit of this. It's not your typical ministerial application. We're posting it, move it to type two. So, but one key thing, I have a note on minor in nature site designer view application. There's mis-titled there. So this correction on title for, for E, but we, this is kind of one of the minor major site designer review applications, probably the more common. Maybe Amy, I don't know, they're in there, application that, that is received. It can be very simple that somebody wants to do a facade remodel enough to trigger exterior review and we would look at it. Look at what that change is against what the standards are of the code. But it is kind of a strange bird in some degree. It does mention new developments there. And we did have some, some changes. I, I'm just kind of showing you what the initial draft shows there in yellow. Additionally, minor site designer view is applicable to all residential developments. We're shown to comply with all applicable design standards. And there's a reference to that where they're found. So this is kind of again, initial draft. If you say, wait a minute, no, we don't like that element. We want something at least notification, or maybe that's what comes with planning commission. There's a sensitivity of the, again, the rules that you saw and a rule statutes that speak to housing and trying to process applications that clearly meet standards in a way that is subject to administrative review. So at least it's introduced this way to, again, to the extent that the planning commission has not comfortable with that. Yeah, we, we can change it. But one of the things too is what are you evaluating if something comes to you and meets the clear and objective standards? So if it's not something that's discretionary, sometimes it comes to you because something else is married to it. A conditional use or a variance to it. If it is something, a deviation from the standard, it is appropriate for that to, to go to a higher level. So is this kind of one of the things to, to, to consider? Kind of letting you know that, hey, we, we've got some things in here that will streamline the the review process, but it may be if it's on a ministerial and this is kind of what those bullets show is not something that even property owners get notification on. It's, it's something administratively reviewed and it only comes to the planning commission if the applicant were to appeal the staff decision. Um, should I, I mean, I'm gonna kind of go through the rest of these. I can go through the rest of these and go through afterwards of this planning commission. Okay, so let's move to the next slide. It will introduce the type two administrative review process. This isn't a bogue new idea. A lot of jurisdictions have, when they have a type two, it's more common at least that a type two means notice is issued to property owners in the vicinity of a project site. But there is no hearing unless that decision, the decision would be the city manager or the designate of, of the planner or whoever to make that decision. So that's the details there show what, what occurs there. Property owners receive notice that in part that notice says no hearing that, hey, if you have a concern, please notify staff. That would give you the, the standing to appeal the decision further if you, you know, if you don't like it. But if you something comes in writing after we issue the notice and then that person is entitled to the notice of decision. What staff does is prepare findings. So it is a decision that goes out. There's an appeal period that's made clear as part of the notice. And if there is no appeal, that decision is final. There are some applications. This is where you see minor variance that was part of the type one that we're moving down to type two is again, proposal, minor conditional use also moving down. Some of these that are struck through, you'll, you'll see C through E and G and H there in the type three. So you would, you would, you'll still see all of those. Again, I mentioned the floodplain. It was a type one. We're proposing to move that to type two. Vacation rentals is actually the closest thing that the city has for a type two process. It's, it's, it's a, it's kind of a it's, it's type two provided that no one says anything. Correct me if I'm wrong. But it is one that's not necessarily a decision is, is made. The way type two knows says this is a period of time. If you don't have, if you have concerns about that, let us know. What the vacation rental permit says though is What, uh, the vacation rental per- permit says though, is, uh, it goes to the planning commission automatically. If there's a complaint. Check me if I'm wrong, I know, uh, Amy's processed a few of these.
Right, so if somebody complains, then they then have to do the conditional use.
Dumps up to a conditional use based on the complaint, it's not an appeal of staff's decision. There's no decision that comes before the planning commission, it's just a, a, a person. So conceivably, you have a process that can be done, if nobody complains, a decision is issued. Versus somebody who does complain, and there's two applications and two fees, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
Okay, so, so, this is one of those things, we are, we're kind of talking about the process tonight. But there's also some changes in the works into the body of the vacation rentals as well, as the heads up on that one.
Just a quick question.
Yeah.
Clarification. Uh, under details for type two and three, the first two bullet point points, the owners of property in a hundred foot vicinity. And the notice has now been changed, I believe, from thirty to twenty, so it's current statute. The current guidelines, thirty days and five hundred foot vicinity, because I know they were in the past.
Okay, um, so. Yeah, we, um.
What is, what is the current language?
Oh, I have to check and, and see.
Language is a hundred feet.
Okay.
Previously, I mean, when I did mine, it was five hundred feet and thirty days notice, because one hundred feet could be just one lot.
For a vacation rental?
No, nothing to a vacation. Everything on bullet one and two, under two and three. Um, because one hundred feet could literally be one lot. And on a street, you know, where people are impacted, um.
Yeah.
I know a lot of people would not be comfortable with that.
County has those depths, but we don't have any code where we have to notify people within five hundred feet, it's two hundred and fifty is the furthest.
When I built my house, that's, that's what the statute was, it was five hundred, because I had people on two streets come to my meeting, saying, ah, because small town. Somehow, somehow, somebody said, oh, mobile home going in, I was like, nope, erroneous, nope, here's my.
Yeah, they still have to post it at the post office and at city hall, so they might have only notified those within, like, mail.
No, people got mailed envelopes, because they all came in waving them, and, you know, this was a little while ago, but not that long ago. And I believe it was thirty days for appeal, because twenty, twenty seems a little short.
So most of the type, you correct me if I'm wrong, but it's type three, most of the type three is a hundred foot notice, right, right now, for most of the. I think the one exception, I think vacation rentals is at two fifty.
It's, it's one hundred, it's also one hundred, I always do a buffer.
Oh, buffer.
So it's basically whoever's next door, and that's it.
Okay, yeah, so. So, um, one of the things that we, we can check into, if there's not state law that has a governing, can't exceed five hundred or something like that. Um, then it is, hey, that's a quantitative standard, that's up for grabs, that you could adjust that, that's fair game. Uh, we could, we can look into it on, uh, state law, or.
And then twenty, the twenty versus thirty day.
Okay.
Twenty seems skimpy.
Twenty.
Thirty, I think is reasonable.
This is thirty.
And I have another question about the fence thing, but we can do that at the end, I don't, you're wanting to get through this.
Okay.
If the, generally agreed to, the staff, will this allow for a more efficient use of your resources and time?
It's pretty similar to what we already do, the only concern is when we receive come. Any type of complaint or concern from the public, um, having to explain to the applicant, you need to pay additional one thousand dollars. On top of what you've already done, and resubmit a new application, it's kind of a hard pill to swallow for a lot of people. On their confusing, and because they've already met all the standards to the vacation rental application. Um, and now they have to do another application for something that may or may not happen, depending on what their concern is.
Is that standard practice for most small cities for vacation rental, is that just something that's done? Or is that just something unique to Carlton?
I, I haven't seen it.
Yeah.
And I've staffed the cities, that not, most, I mean, some cities don't have vacation rental. Yeah, uh, I, this is the first time I've seen a, a double process, paying two fees and. Um, and it is one of those things too, I think, running by the city attorney, I'm, I'm curious on what, uh, it just seems, but anyways.
Well, wait, I'm sorry, is that something that we're proposing to change within this?
So we are proposing to change.
Yeah, nice, okay.
Be in the, the, you'll see that added to the, you know, the work that's gonna be.
And, and then there'll be clear, objective standards to assess whether you approve or deny a vacation rental standard.
It will follow under, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because that's super helpful, to have really clear, objective standards for vacation rentals, because otherwise, then we're just kind of guessing what.
Yeah.
We think things mean.
Yeah.
Not to play devil's advocate, but I would think that if you're not notifying people of these changes, and then it's done about the double jeopardy kind of thing. You know, if, if they're notified, then they have a means to state their concerns, but if they find out after the fact, and then it's going into an appeal, it just. Seems to me a little, um. I don't want to say disingenuous, but it, it doesn't sound, uh. Like the true objective is to get people's approval of one of these until after the fact. Because then it, it kind of sets up a, a more adversarial relationship, if you know what I'm saying. Um, whereas I think if people within a perimeter were notified, everybody has their moment, everybody can state their objections, their concerns, whatever. They're dispensed with, get approval, boom, it's done, you're not going to the appeals, you're not doing all this stuff, because it just seems a bit more above board to me, but.
And now this would be a single fee, right, so you're not dealing with the two bytes of the Apple program.
There you go.
Lot clear. Yeah, okay, like. Seems, seems inefficient, yeah, seems inefficient, inefficient use, yeah, 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 excellent, uh, Mr. White, thank you, sir.
Yeah, and just, uh, you know, again, kind of going back to the slide that was kind of boring, that had just the, uh. Code of, uh, O R S and O P R. Um, again, process, and so we looked at some, I have some notes there, uh, minor variance is actually pretty clear. It's a twenty per- percent deviation from the numeric standard, so there's really not much that we have to change with a variance. Uh, uh, Amy can alert applicants as I can, as far as, oh, okay, yeah, that qualifies for minor variance. And would be a type two process as opposed to a type three process based on, uh, it being whatever, you know. Whatever the numeric standard is, so we can, if you clearly, uh, make that distinction. Um, minor conditional use is kind of more some markup here, because we want to provide that, and again. It's, it's just more kind of a comfort level of the planning commission may have, it's not a need for decisions tonight, of course, but. I, you know, as I say, if we move along, I just want to sort of alert you that, that we are kind of coming up with, uh, some thresholds. Or what would be, just as minor shows twenty percent deviation, a little different with a conditional use. So you've seen them before, it's maybe, uh, it's a school in a residential zone, or a church in a residential zone. And so you have, well, all right, they want to expand, of course, uh, what is the comfort level with that? Uh, we have the existing minor conditional use permit, we're moving it, propose to move, to move it from, uh, ministerial. Uh, as kind of, as a strange way to, to phrase things, but introducing kind of this, this quantitative threshold. That, that's shown there, twenty-five percent of the existing floor area, not exceeding, uh, total floor area of a thousand square feet. Um, that is a threshold, I think we found in another code, uh, but.
If it did, then it would bump it back to type, type one.
Um, so, yeah, I mean, if, if it's more than twenty-five percent floor area, uh. Uh, not to exceed thousands of square feet, this is kind of, uh, the ratio, what, what something is, uh, it could be a huge. So, uh, school of twenty thousand square feet, uh, so that's why we put the, the, the top, uh, um. Know the thousand.
As it's currently worded, it says, and not exceeding a total floor.
Oh, and, okay.
Shouldn't it say or?
Uh, it should, yeah, less than twenty-five square, uh, or.
I would read that conjunctive as opposed to digital, I think and just works.
Well, he just gave the example of a school.
But it, that one wouldn't apply, that would, what, your, your twenty thousand square foot, that would move it up to type three.
Uh, that was my question, I think.
Well, yeah, yeah, it depends on the, the circumstance of. But, uh, yeah, yeah, the, the idea is that, um, something would move it up to a type three, if it's a large addition. Uh, it, it's large enough maybe to reevaluate traffic, or something that, that should be given further consideration. Uh, again, with the type two, yeah, there's notice it goes out, but it doesn't come to the planning commission, uh, so unless, so. So, uh, anyways, um, yeah, just pretty much, um, saying what, what we have, if, if the commission feels. Again, it's still in the realm there of clear and objective, if you felt, uh, that, uh, well, yeah, let's, let's lower that down to. Five hundred square feet or something like that, um, that's, that's fair game. Um, you move on to the next slide, uh, come back to these two. Type three quasi judicial hearing, it's something that the planning commission is, uh, familiar with, and, uh. So, uh, we are moving most of the applications that already exist, uh, from type two, to where the, you know. Type three, uh, and it stays substantially the same there, or notification is, is provided. Um. So, uh, let's see what else can I say, um, zoning, uh, change, uh. Typically, when it's initiated by the applicant, um, is a quasi judicial application as, as well, but, um. It's something that has to go to council for, for acting on change map. So it's kind of one of those exceptions that we put in the structure of changes. So, uh, it'll be a type three, but there'll be this extra step, uh, for, for a zone change. Uh, you'll see road dedication, that's, uh, that's one of those that we've, we've taken out, just like the fence permit. Uh, it, uh, exists right there, yeah, list, as listed, but there is no description of it, no criteria. I don't recall if the city has, uh, processed one, then, then let me know, but, um, so, uh, so we're getting rid of it. Uh, and annexation's kind of the same sort of thing that, uh, requires, uh, council action, um, ordinance. Street vacation, uh, that's also not described in code, but it is described very well as part of statute. And so, uh, the city, uh, follows the, the statute, uh, has a strange kind of notification board. Street vacations, so we just want to keep that and sort of make it the quasi judicial, uh, hearing level as well. Uh, but anyways, uh, yeah, that's, uh, in a nutshell, what we have shown, proposed for. For type three, um, uh. Slide there, type four, legislative, not much in the way of changes here, so this, this stays substantially the same. Um, there is no hundred and twenty day clock, uh, that's one of the things we're very mindful of. And especially with, uh, the type one, two, and three there, that, that are subject to the, the one twenty day clock. Um, it, it can be, I know we're talking about legislative, with, hey, you don't have to worry about that, um. And I don't have to worry about making a decision too, it's, it's a nice thing about legislative, you can just kind of keep it going on for years and years and years. Um. But, uh, we are mindful about the, the clock, and we, I didn't mention the other change, a lot, kind of quickly. Let's say that is, um, we are proposing a one limit appeal in the code. Uh, where the code allows, if, if it's a ministerial application, the applicant appeals the staff decision. To the planning commission, uh, the code currently allows a second appeal to city council, we are proposing, uh, to be. Uh, to, to, to minimize any, um. Any infraction, wherever it is with the, with a hundred and twenty days, we are suggesting one, one appeal, that, and that one appeal. Via the planning commission, uh, for, for type, appeals of type one and type two decisions. Uh, that would be the final appeal, it would be the final written decision of the city, and then it would go up to the language of the. After that, it's the land use board of appeals, uh, the type three, uh, applications there. That would be appealed, that can be appealed to the city council, that's the one appeal. So, um, then one more slide after this, I think, the final slide, it just, uh, it's just what, uh, I, I like this graphic that you. And how, I was kind of looking for graphics that sort of show well a process in, uh, kind of a flow chart. Um, I just wanted, uh, also, um, to say something about things that, steps that other cities take. Um, uh, as far as, um. Oh, outreach to, to the, the public and things.
The show up and speak part?
Oh, I'm sorry.
The two and three, where it says show up and speak at a public meeting?
No, um.
If they're from the bottom.
They're, they're from the bottom there, yeah, uh. Yeah. Yeah, I guess, I, I don't know what, uh, this is, uh, Ben's example, and my guess is that they have. Uh, they might have a required neighborhood meeting that, that is to occur, uh, ahead of, um. Uh, it's actually submitting your application, and the city deeming it complete. Uh, some cities require a pre-application meeting, if it's a certain size. Uh, no change that, we, first of all, Carlton does not, uh, require applicants to go through a pre-application. Meeting, uh, it's an optional thing, there is a fee, uh, that applies for it, if, uh, if, if. An applicant does do that, it's, uh, sometimes it's encouraged, and applicants often want to do that to, to understand. Uh, the, the, the key considerations, um, and, uh, and, and applications and so on, so. Um, neighborhood meeting, Carlton's just not big enough to divide, the city of, of Portland and Beaverton has neighborhoods. Uh, the, the broke down, there, there really isn't a, a, a need for that, so it's, it's not required, and no proposal to introduce. Via the code changes, really the one thing I, I did want to just, uh, show in a graphic form, which. Why I like this graphic is, uh, that it shows the, the type two process going to a decision and not, uh. Not to a public hearing, again, unless there's an appeal, graphic doesn't show an appeal scenario there, I think they tried to. Simplify, uh, this, but, um. Uh, but anyways, uh, that, that's the reason why the, the graphic is there. Uh, happy to answer questions and thoughts that, that you have, and go back to the slides. Um, I will also sort of ask if, uh, they have any, uh, interest for. I mean, there will, there'll be more work sessions on various other, uh, chapters, and, uh, might be an interest. Breakwork session with city council on some of these as well. Um. And, uh, and I gotta say too, that there is, you know, the consultant team is, is, uh, under contract to do a, a lot of the work. Um, that, uh, my role is kind of to review, uh, but also sort of to, to embellish a lot of the work. So, at least for these two divisions, uh, you'll, you'll see a lot of my, uh, comments where I've added something in there. Uh, it's, it's, it's been a lot of work on this, um.
Yours are the comments in red?
What's that?
Yours are the comments in red?
Oh, oh, for this?
Or do you mean for the comments that are going to go through the advisory?
Oh, with, yeah, yeah, for the advisory com- committee, you'll, you'll see, um, on the, uh. Side of the margin, some, some comments, so sort of explaining the reason for the change to this, that we could, um. Hopefully those will remain, I don't, but it's in the hands of the consultant team to, uh, introduce and, uh. Deliver to the, to the advisory committee.
Then, I'll ask you one brief question on, if we go back to the type two slide, I just wanted to make sure, I saw under minor conditional use. It looked like there was a strike through, it says, uh, minor conditional use. Permit review shall be applicable to striking through all new developments, exterior alterations, so it's just, shall be applicable to changes or expansions. To existing conditional uses, so what about a new minor conditional use, is there such a thing? It, it, would that also be?
There, there is not, because I, I'm sorry, I didn't show this, this is where I don't want to pack a slide too much, but, uh. There is a threshold for, uh, for major conditional use, uh, which is the new conditional use, so.
Okay.
Um, minor, from what we can tell, and, and, and what the intent is, it's a change to, to something that.
It would already been previously approved by the, the planning commission, but this is just an administrative.
Administrative, yeah, if it's new, it goes to the planning commission, if it's an addition or something like that, or a mod. Administrative, yeah, if it's new, it goes to the planning commission, if it's an addition or something like that, or a modification of something. Then it goes to, uh, can possibly go through this process.
Okay. Okay, thanks for clarification, pardon me, Suzie.
That's okay.
You have a question?
No, no, I, um, well, so for that, I have to come back to this vacation rental permit, cuz that was very, very, we've only, I've only, since I've been on planning commission. Only had to do that once, and like one of the criteria was if it substantially changes the char- character of the neighborhood. Which I felt like could go either way, which was really an awkward position to be put in, and so is language like that. Cuz that does not feel clear and objective to me.
Right, you'll you'll see that struck out.
Perfect, okay. Okay.
It will not be limited to housing. I will just kind of say that.
Okay.
The, I mean, the rule and statute speaks specifically to housing. Um, there is, you know, that 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 there are, uh, we've we've looked at. That also in commercial areas where a design standard speaks to harmony with the rest of the buildings.
Right, and that's very hard to.
And, you know, it it puts the city in, uh, you know, in in legal difficulty, I'm I'm not an attorney, and I'm. Tyler would, you know, I think you would kind of say, you know, gee, yeah, this is one of those things, if we can make it as clear and objective as possible and.
That's super helpful, yeah. Yeah, thank you, that was my only question.
Any other question from the team? Thank you very much, I think the advisory committee will be well informed by your contributions and the efforts of the consultants and. Um, unfortunately, I won't be able to attend that one, but I will be reading, cuz you'll be circulating your comments as well to all of us in advance of that.
Uh, yeah, so I am as far as the next steps, here we do it again, have, I think I mentioned the next week, uh, the next Thursday, or is it, uh? I don't know when the next. The next one, and and so some some changes, I I will be informing, uh, the the planning commission, uh. Uh, I, the, uh, the consultant in there, uh, just some any feedback that we have tonight, I certainly received some feedback of checking interstate law. On, no, a hundred, uh, foot vicinity there, uh, twenty day versus thirty day notice, um. I, no, i- if there is, I'm having to report back and and see if there is, one of the things in the twenty versus thirty day. Uh, notice period, the only concern I would have is a hundred and twenty day, the total period of time to which we have to. To make a decision, that being the final decision, uh, that includes any appeal. So, uh, it's just kind of a matter of that hundred and twenty days, sometimes that time gets eaten up, uh. My commission only meets once, uh, once a month.
Yeah, that's what I would worry about with the thirty days, you you miss potentially like almost two meetings, right? And so now you could end up with. Whereas twenty days, there will be a meeting within like twenty days.
Based on the city's experience, what's the mail time from something you stick out to going and somewhere on the community? Two days?
He, some of them do have to go a little ways, you know, at some of them where you're out of state or whatnot, um. I've sent one to Florida, and that was obviously the longest one, and it took a week.
Yeah. I I'm just guessing that, um, the sensitivity to the proximity and having a broader contribution pool. Would make more sense than necessarily changing the twenty day, because being sensitive to a hundred and twenty day limitation, but this is a community that I have continued to learn. Likes to, um, likes to be involved, especially when they have a prompt, and this is a really good way to both facilitate an administrative change. For the benefit of city staff as well as maybe meet a compromise, whether it's five hundred or two hundred and fifty foot, but acknowledging that, especially for a vacation rental permit. I we've done probably two or three of these, I think, in the last year or so, and the the comments generally were, how's this gonna impact on parking? You know, even if we have clear rules, how, what is the procedure for neighbors to to communicate to the owner, to the city? If there are standards that are not being met, and the more communication we have tends to be the better, even if that communication doesn't result in a happy neighbor. If the process is a little bit fairer, a little bit more contributory, I think that, yeah, I think that it lends itself to support. Us being able to clearly support the city and saying, hey, they followed the rules, you didn't follow, you didn't, it's it's appeal, it's not just the one neighbor, the one property line. For the event, you know, that it's kind of like your property, it's a little bit further out. Um, more more involvement, and then we get to throw it back to people and say, hey, it's not our fault if you don't pay attention, or you don't contribute your perspective. At the time it's needed.
I'm just dovetailing on what you said too, I have to say, I have some serious concerns, no matter if it's type one, two, or three. That owners of abutting properties do not receive a written notice, I I think that's a recipe for. Discord, um, I think if you don't notify people, then it's on the city, and you're gonna have unhappy people. Um, I think it's much better to notify everybody in that perimeter slightly larger than a hundred feet. And that's it, well, you didn't notice, well, they didn't notice cuz they didn't see the thing in the post office, I mean, that just doesn't seem fair or accurate to me.
And and so with the type two, they they do receive notice of the proposal, what provides a a description of what it is. Um, there's a lock for that, um, so it's, uh, it's fairly, you know, detailed, it's the button. It it is in a contact person at the city for additional information of about it, phone and email and.
Right, but back to type one, like a lot line adjustment, the person whose lot line is being adjusted, isn't even given courtesy of a of a letter?
Oh, that would. Lot line adjustments, the 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 two parties that are part of it, if it's a common line between both properties, have to be aware of it and sign this. Saying they're both, uh, they are both informed of it accordingly.
But we also did this with the school, the sign permit thing, about the the blinking lights, and it's, you know, the neighborhood, he did that. Home occupation permits, I mean, you could have an out of state owner that, you know, maybe they were on vacation. They, you know, takes five days to get there, they're on vacation for a week, they come back, holy moly.
Was it, was the sign permit though, that it was not to code? It was a various, yeah.
It was disruptive to the neighbors.
But the reason it came to us, like, so we're not talking about a sign that's within code, right, a sign that's within the code, the neighbors won't necessarily. Know, right?
True, according to this, yeah, cuz nobody's even.
Right, but like that, that school was not to code, like, that wasn't in the code, which is why it came to the neighbors.
Well, and there was the disruption part that it was on twenty-four seven, and it was like living next to a casino, cuz you had.
Right, but that would notify the neighbors.
Yeah.
Well, the side notified him, yeah.
If any, anytime it comes before you guys, a notice goes out to that, the vicinity.
Yeah.
So.
So the growing pains whenever we, you know, evolve to meet the next generation's needs.
I I'm sort of sensing here maybe interest in a broader notification, uh, not so much of the concern about, uh, the thirty day period there, but. And I'm sensing that the commission would, uh, like that, this is kind of, well, we can check into that and make sure that there's not a limit on state law. For for that sort of thing, it, uh, that's not a a difficult one, it's just a broader exercise as far as, uh. Uh, your program that does that kind of thing and and grab the the property.
It's it's a good business practice, it's being a good neighbor, it's not setting a stage for any antagonists.
And I would say whenever I get negative feedback about city government, if someone says, oh, you're from the planning commission, well, let me tell you, I didn't even know. And it's because nobody reads the stuff at the post office, or if they do, it's somebody that just happens to be really diligent about reading the post office stuff. And, you know, the little, uh, it just, uh, yeah, and so it is nice to have as much notification as possible, and it does invite more comment. But people like to be heard, and it actually informs our work, I mean, if if lots of people give us input. Then we know we've fallen short, I mean, i- it it helps us know where we are, and I I feel like it's a good thing.
And I wanna ask to just make sure, uh, the the advisory committee will weigh in this as council will as well, I think, or it's a type two process, but I'm not sensing heartburn. Over it, explained it, okay.
I'm just gonna throw in one more concern.
Yeah.
Sorry, it's it's our time to do that, type one ministerial, and I and I know you said, oh, you don't, you know, get any requests or whatever. It's a fence permit, I know you're saying you're just gonna strike it whatsoever, there is not a fence permit, but there are guidelines in the city code about fencing. However, there is no enforcement mechanism, as I found out, um, people flout it all the time. And so I think it's a mistake to get rid of it. Um, a lot of the things that I hear from people are about, you know, lot things having to do with fences. Uh, and I think just pretending that it's not an issue sometimes is, again, kind of inviting trouble. I think if you have the clear guidelines that we've always had, but getting rid of them, I don't think is wise.
Just just a couple of thoughts on on that, um, so the. Someone could argue it doesn't exist right now, there's reference to a fence, we don't have type one up there, um, but that's it. There isn't anything codified that describes, you know, when it's required, uh, what the thresholds are, just some some standards in the code. So it doesn't, uh, so if it's the commission's desire to to see that, it would be appropriate. To add what the criteria would would be, uh, that there's clearly, there there's an application form, that that's outlined. Uh, and, yeah, the the response would be that that anybody calling in would would be told, oh, you need a a permit. A lot of times too, is the the difficulty of this is alignment with the building code, uh, it is not required to. Um, get a a building permit for a six foot fence, um, they're pretty much exempt. Uh, through a lot of lot of city, unless there is a special ordinance by the city to require. Uh, yeah, but, um, structurally, building guys don't care about it, and so, um.
But there are disputes neighbor to neighbor, somebody decides to put up a fence, and it doesn't meet the criteria, but there's no enforcement mechanisms to address it. They didn't have to get a permit, and that invites a lot of discord, and I think that I'm I'm not advocating for. Throwing another permit out there, but I don't think that we should get rid of guidelines or the verbiage stating what the guidelines are. Because at least then neighbors have a foundation to try to address whatever their differences are. Standard.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Like, for instance, when we looked at the apartments that were built on Main Street, we had a lot of discussion about the fence. You know, and then there's like a sub level, and those people don't have any, you know, view to the outside, cuz that's the way it's built. And then the people coming into town are like, oh, well, you know, there's this fence, and the people coming out of Carlton Crest headlights, so, I mean, there's a lot of thoughtful. Um, design review, I'm sure that goes on with builders, but I don't think that people. Currently say that live in Carlton where they don't have fences, and then somebody decides to put one up, should be left with nothing. So maybe there's just a further discussion there.
I was gonna remain in the code, right?
The standards will remain, just the reference to the, you know, the, it's like the the bridge to nowhere, the the reference to a permit that doesn't exist.
Cuz the standards have always been that there's just no, there's nobody that will check up on them, there's no person from the city that's gonna come out and say, whoa, that's not, you know, compliance. And people flout it all the time, I've been on the receiving end of that, so.
I I would think, you know, if if it's a vision clearance area, I I don't know what the the practice is, uh, you know, I know. That cities have responded to it despite no, uh, no, uh, permit, um, and especially if it's tied to some sort of. Uh, you know, and a nuisance fence, somebody builds barbed wire or something like that.
People block people's views, sometimes there's an animal involved, whatever.
It's a, if it's a hazard, a safety issue, clearly that's something that the city should.
But to, but to leave people with no, no recourse, no, you know, just not to have those guidelines, or I I think that might be a mistake.
You know, all standards will remain, uh, but that was, uh, also just. Uh, taking out some mystery parts of the code, uh, as well.
You see, you're striking reference to a.
This this what, 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 yeah, uh, uh, we're striking the hint, uh, to what doesn't exist right now.
Right.
Excellent. Any other comments on Mr. White's helpful summary?
Well, thanks for your good work.
Thank you. We have moved on to the uncharted territory of commissioner comments, any thoughts, comments, concerns, updates, feelings, sentiments?
Not related to anything on the agenda.
I, yeah, I have something, as usual, and it has to do with trees, and I'm. And I'm concerned about the, um, crab apples that were planted in the planting strip on Seventh Street. Um, they are not on any planning list that we have, and so I think the developer was in nonconformance. In planting the prairie fire crab apples. Um, there's a, there's a street tree called Malis chinosphii, that's actually spelled wrong on the city tree list. But nevertheless, it refers to a very specific crab apple that has a specific growing habit, which is upright. So that it makes a good street tree, the tree that they planted has a very broad, low branching. In fact, if you try to walk on that sidewalk, you get hit in the face with one of the branches on it, um, it gets to be the prairie fire, the species that they planted is. Will grow to be twenty feet by twenty feet, which is gonna block the sidewalk, it's just not a street tree, it's a landscape tree. And so, um, I believe that that should be removed, and then also, I have comments about their planting process. It's very messy, it's just sloppy, the the fat landscape fabric is coming up through the bark dust. I doubt they prepared the soil just because, just the process they did, they let it approach the permanent wilting point. Which is what we call death, and then I don't know who put the bags of water on him, I don't know if it was a developer, or if the city said, oh my god, you're gonna die. But anyway, but it's it's not appropriate tree care, and so they should be required to replace that landscape.
Can you, um, provide specific lots or areas or?
So we. Yeah, um, I will, I'll email that to you, I'll take a picture of them and email them to you.
That'd be great.
And, um, the, um, also the Austria Virginana, which is the hot porn bean that they planted, um. That was also allowed to approach the permanent wilting point, or the water bags are added, I don't know. If those will recover, those at least are on our street tree list, although they're mislabeled on our street tree list, um. So, yeah, I I still wish we would correct our street tree list, because it's still wrong. When I Google Carlton street tree list, it still has the errors in it, um, I I've mentioned it a couple of times, so I'm hoping that that it. And more for the the importance, because it lends, when we leave errors, and they're pretty egregious, I mean, I know, because you guys don't really. Know trees, maybe, or maybe you do, but to anybody who a landscaper or a person who knows about trees, reads that list. It makes us look stupid, and I don't, I mean, I I'm kind of proud of our little city, and I don't wanna look stupid, and it also. Gives the impression that nobody cares, so if they plant whatever, and nobody says anything. Then it just makes us look like we, either we don't know, or that we don't care, and I care, trees are important, and I care.
Well, and I wanted to call out, uh, Commissioner Nordstrom and Commissioner Terrell for putting in a lot of work. And that tree list happened, and so it would be nice that that was respected.
Thanks.
Do we need commission or council action on that, or is it just a document that needs spell check, or, I mean, what to the extent of the edits that you're looking for?
So I sent the edits to you, I I emailed, I CC'd you, I sent them to you. I think you've gotten CC'd on those emails, I can send it again, but it's, um, it's concerning, cuz I've been, I mean. Before even you were our city planner, back when Kyle was our city planner, that that's the era when I notified about that.
So assuming we have the the corrections that are necessary, and they're just, let's call them scrivener's errors or clerical mistakes.
They just, any sheet document just needs to be fixed.
It's just a.
Well, I think, but this is regarding the the list that you.
Yeah.
It was not taken care of, I'm I'm thinking.
She's saying about the current street tree list, the list that the planning commission has proposed is under review by PGE as well as the state. For or for additional input.
Okay, so there's an input review process, and then eventually goes to city council on a resolution.
Okay.
Okay.
Is there a general?
But there's an existing street tree list, it's been somewhere.
And so you're saying the existing, it's not on the existing street tree list.
It's not on any, it's not on my propose, it's not on this commission proposed list, it's not on the existing one, it's on none of them.
Um, I will kind of just chime in a little bit on saying that, yeah, it it's one of those difficult things, uh, to check. On on the tree, you're right, there's not a lot of experts that are out there, that, hey, the tree's planted, you know, it's it's more the, just a quick accomplishment. Yeah, and I'll go and do another thing, um, yeah, a- and it's unfortunately something that gets in the very last thing that that's. Put in place there after the the homes is filled, uh, sometimes the timing of it's better, you know, to have it later on too, in the spring and things like that. Planting, um, I I, it's a, it is, I've I've heard this before too, just just, you know, hey, they planted the wrong tree, and and. You know, how much can the city check on it, sometimes it's just not not there, the city doesn't.
The labels are attached still.
Yeah, um, yeah, I it, I think it's just a a difficult thing for a small jurisdiction to to do. Yeah, um, yeah, I I think it's just a a difficult thing for a small jurisdiction to to do. Uh, I'll I'll say that Beaverton had, I worked for Beaverton for seventeen years and it was during my time there. That there was enough problems with it that the city said, we're gonna do something totally different here. We're we're going to not have the developer put in the trees. We're gonna do it. We're gonna take a fee of two hundred dollars. And and the city public, but there's Public Works Office and an arborist who write and plant them right. Uh, so it was, it was all codified and now the city of Carlton is just not set up. There's not an arborist. On staff, a different city.
We don't need to add to the public works list of trees either.
And here's, here's the thing, we do have code that tells the developer, this is how you plant the tree. There's specific directions for how you plant the tree. And there's also a specific, you must choose, it's in the code, you must choose a tree on the tree list. And so the developer needs to show proof that they have planted the trees that they, and so that's not on the city. That's on the developer.
And if they put them in and within a year they're dying, it'll be a lot easier to yank them out now and put in the correct tree than it will twenty years from now when they're twenty feet.
Well, right, and and here's the thing, is is it is on them to prove that they planted the right tree. So somehow they need to come to the city and say, yep, here's the trees we planted, here's the labels. That we did, we did what we were supposed to do. And if we don't hold them accountable, if we do not hold them accountable. Then we will continue to have substandard work and it'll be, and the trees will die, they'll get fire blade. Crab apples get, they're just not street trees. Anyway, but they'll get fire blade, they'll be a mess. And then we'll say, oh, well, then that tree dies, it gets taken out. And do we have the money to replace street trees right now? I'm, I mean, no evidence shows me that anybody's planting new street trees. In fact, I've seen trees disappear in town. Rather, there there there's less trees than when I, than, yeah, each year we have less and less trees.
Well, I'd 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 like to see the developer do the right thing and provide.
Yeah. I mean, I don't want to do. Exactly, they signed up to do it and they should be held accountable.
And then also, how is it going to be moving forward with the new developments that are going in?
Exactly.
We haven't been able to trust them up to this point. I've walked down and seen those trees and it's just pathetic. You walked down, if you, I was driving down, um, Baker, Baker Creek. And McMinnville has done an amazing job with their, it's gorgeous there. And they're like every ten feet, and there are these gorgeous trees in these new developments that not, aren't even as nice homes. As the ones in the, and so, I don't know, it's just hard to feel trusting. Of this developer and it seems like, I don't know what we might be able to do to support the city. In 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 having it that this, this is, these people are accountable. But if we look at how important trees are, you look at, I don't know if any of you caught the article on NPR. About the city of Boston and the, and that we have these heat islands. This is critical. They are, they are making it a priority. And in Austin, they had. This uh scientists and city planners together, working on. And there could be as much of a difference as from five degrees to fifteen degrees. Because of the lack of trees. So it's not gonna get cooler.
Yeah.
This is something we need to, we need to really. I I don't know what, you know, I don't want the city to have anything more to do, but boy, if the city has any ideas about what. You know, a group of concerned people could do. There's a lot of people, I think, who would be jumping on board.
These are for, the, in the part of Chad Davis Construction, right?
Yeah.
That's what we're talking about.
Yeah.
We just were requested with, um, let's put it in the form of a favor this evening about phasing.
Yeah.
And maybe I've seen Godfather too many times, but generally, um, if you scratch one back, another back can be scratched. And you have a unique opportunity here where they're asking for a reasonable request that is based upon. Uh, of a fair and reasonable interpretation. We're gonna be seeing them again in thirty days. Seem like a reasonable time to give pictures and say, hey. We're not saying that this is a mandatory requirement, but if you're gonna continue to do business in the city, we're gonna have. Uh, an expectation of you of affirmative compliance. And one way that you can do that is correct prior failures. Seems like a a.
I don't even feel like it's a favor. It's what they're required to do.
Our CDC is gonna, we can, we're in the process of changing it, and that's where you can put in more teeth, but right now with working what we have. I don't think there's any reason with bringing it to.
Exactly we have, includes them planting the wrong species.
I I'll give you that, but.
Yeah.
I I'll I'll dance with the girl that brung me. Is, you know, when you go to prom, there's all the cute girls, but the one that brought you is the one you dance with. Right now, we've got Chad Davis Construction, former builder, future prospective builder. We're already at the dance show with them. And we say, we're doing you a favor with respect to this one thing. These are things that need attention. I don't think it puts us in a position where we're compelling it, but we're saying. You're gonna spend, i- if 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 our decision is, you know what, we would just would prefer, because, you know, talking with our city attorney, we want to follow protocol. We want you to go ahead and submit a new modification, go through the hundred and twenty day period. You're gonna spend five to ten thousand dollars or more. Working with AKS in your attorney, or spend a thousand dollars, correct these trees that you already were required to do that. And when we do our CDC update, which in the next six to twelve months, right, is a reasonable timeline. We put in some teeth so that you can deal with enforcement after the fact. I say you, we can deal with enforcement after the fact, but. We're, you know, we've been given a couple of aces here. It seems like that would be a fair. Application of fortuity right now to address these people. We're we already got them by the string.
Right, well, and and all of these are reasonable arguments, but before we get that far down the road, I'd like to, I'd like to validate everything that Commissioner Gek said. And just make a request to our city administrators to.
Yeah.
Perhaps put in an email saying, hey, you know, the seeds are dying, you think you could swap them out? So it might be that simple.
A couple of things. Um, I just got back from my International City Managers Conference in Austin, Texas. And one of the tours that I took, they talked about their green space. Not to disagree anything with the NPR article, I'm nothing to challenge the NPR article at all or what Austin is trying to do. It's just mandated a reduction in green space to allow for housing. So I'm adding a challenge and context to something that they're gonna be facing in the next future. Um, so again, not dis- disagreeing at all with the premise of the article, just to add more context. Two, Amy's been taking notes about the comments about the trees. Before we jump to the assumption that the developer isn't willing to remedy the situation, let her look into it, please.
I'm happy to do that. My only, my only follow up to that is, um, my request would be. That developers, when they decide they're going to put their street trees in, whenever it, whatever process, whatever phase of their development, they put them in there. And I get it that they do it last because they don't want to run over with their tractors. That I understand. But they submit a list of the actual trees that they planted, and it's really easy just to go down the list. Yep, that's on our street tree list. No, that's not. I mean, it's just written. They they should write it and they should submit a list of what they do, so that you don't have to go. Like, we don't have to send Public Works out to say, yep, that's the tree. Oh wait, here's the tag they left on. Like, they could, they just submit a list of what they planted and then it's really easy. And then in addition to this, um, in the, in the era of Emerald Ashbor. Um, in the past era of Dutch elm disease, um, and I I mentioned this when Jennifer and I created our street tree list. A limit on the percentage of genera that's planted in one year, so that we don't have. So, for example, they planted a whole bunch of Acer grisium down one street, which are lovely little trees, so on board with. Yay for Acer grisium. But if you have a whole street of one species. And or or a street of Acer grisium and then Acer freemani, and then Acer. If if some pest comes in, you've lost your whole tree canopy, and that's such an investment. They need to do, and we don't have the code for that. So I understand that. Right now, we don't have the code. But when we do our code update, and I think I mentioned it when we did our meetings about that, but I'm not sure that they, I'm not sure. It's heard as, as imperatively as it is. Because we're gonna lose a lot of canopy to the Emerald Ashbor. We're gonna lose huge, huge swaths of that because it's unstoppable. But we can control our urban environment. We can control it by diversifying it. And then we don't lose everything. And when I walk with my four-year-old to the park, she isn't. Lay, she's not like, oh granny, it's so hot, I can't walk another step. She's like we are when I walked to her to the park in Hillsborough, and it's just one canopy to the next of, I think shade tree, that feels good. You know, it's the difference. And I can't walk from my house to the lower park in Weinberg, and it it's unbearable in the summer. We're losing so many trees, and I I just wish there was some urgency around planting trees in our community and and codifying that as street trees. So that's, and really, really showing that we care, that that's an important thing. And just, I I'm not gonna, I just, one more thing.
Can I add on to that?
Yes.
One of the things in this tour that I took was a public-private partnership with what they call conservation agreements. With um, nonprofit agencies in order to plant trees. And so that is a tool that I have brought back. What's that called, Shannon? It's conservation cons- conservancy agreement, but it's something I need to pull from them. So it's, it's tools. I always go looking for tools in all of these conferences and it doesn't always happen overnight, unfortunately.
No, I understand that. Yeah, I, yeah, and and you know, I just joined, yeah, and I just joined Friends of Trees, so I'm gonna be a crew leader planting trees in the Beaverton area very soon. And um, I suppose I will get some input and some ideas from that, and perhaps that can be something that can be brought to Carlton. I don't know. I don't know how their financing works. I don't know what, what their protocol is. I'm gonna find out. But in my frustration for not being able to influence here things, I, that's, I I'm someone who likes to get things done.
Well, I, and I wanted you to know, we do hear you.
Yeah.
We may not be able to act right away with the limited resources and staff. They like to sleep. They're not robots. I that really.
I can't, you know, I'm not, you know, I'm not, you know that I'm not implying that.
But no, I, we do hear you and we look for these tools when we're at these conferences. Amy just came back with a ton of new tools from a different conference. And so we do hear and we try to find creative ways to make things happen. Even if they're not at the timeline, we all would like it to happen.
So can I just end with one thing? This is from the EPA. These are the benefits of street trees. Reduced energy use, improved air quality, enhanced stormwater management, reduced pavement maintenance. So tree shade can slow deterioration of street pavement. We know we have a forty-six foot wide street on Seventh Street. That's a lot of pavement. It's expensive to replace. If we have shade tree shading it, maybe we, maybe we save a few years, save a few bucks. By having to do that, not having to fix it so so often. And then improve quality of life, aesthetic habitat, and reduce noise. And those are, that's from the EPA. It's not NPR, it's not Fox News. It's it's just kind of generic. And then cities accrued benefits ranging from a dollar fifty to three dollars for every dollar invested. In a street tree. So it, yeah, so that's quite a return.
It's not just about aesthetics.
It, that's quite a a financial return. A dollar fifty, a dot, you invest a dollar fifty, you get three dollars back. And that's. That's considering all the costs associated with planting and maintenance. So that's my, that's my, um, pulpit. I'm done with that now.
I just, I'm just gonna put a dot on that I, so now you can see why the trees, the hundred-plus-year-old Oregon live oaks are near and dear to a lot of people's hearts in this community. They're important.
So Amy's gonna speak with the developer directly over the next month?
And I'll send you a picture of the trees.
You could, because that'd be great, because yes, Chad Davis is the overall archer, but he has still lost some different builders.
Yeah.
So that's the other issue, is a lot of them are different builders that are not part of the original agreement, and so they don't always have.
He might have subcontracted it.
I'm sure he's.
Here's the list and then they put in something different, so.
They just need the.
So let's take the high road and think maybe it's just a matter of miscommunication that, yeah, let's just start.
But I I think, I think hold it, like saying the strong trees are there, they need to be replaced, like just kind of, hey, heads up.
I think it's wrong.
One of the wrong trees, they need to be replaced. Kind of like expect them to do the right thing, but I mean, we are whole, but then they they, I think the accountability piece is important. Because otherwise, next time, nobody's, and maybe we don't have any real teeth to like find them or anything like that. But I think there is the sense that somebody's watching, somebody's gonna notice when you don't follow code, and it is their responsibility to follow code.
And we also have to give them the courtesy of giving them that notification and the benefit of the doubt.
The final backdrop, the plot signature?
Ooh, Anthony.
I resign, co-chair.
Well, I my term ends in December, so.
Administrative remedies we try first. Uh, I I that's one of the, I'm not Tyler here, but you probably urge caution on holding something hostage. So, uh, yeah, not to get the the city in trouble here, but uh. I was also gonna, I I don't know, you know, this is what Shannon and Amy have much more information on. There are some cities that have special uh performance bonding. Uh, usually for subdivisions, that's more so for the infrastructure.
But it's it's substantially complete, so at this point.
Uh, yeah, so so typically, the, yeah, the the bonding doesn't have to do with a lot of the landscape improvements. But uh, yeah, there are some cities that 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 have that and some more stuff that can always be added to the, to the the code. More bonds that the developer will put up and always difficult to collect on a bond. I tried it once and had much success, but. Um, but it is, it is a tool, you know.
I I have one other, um, just comment because as Suzy said, oh, you're on the planning commission. I've had two or three people ask me what, if any, is the plan for West Main Street. Which is in a hideous state of repair. Um, I don't know if we have any of the previous sinkholes. That went on in Main Street downtown and East Main Street happening there, but it's pretty bad.
Never would have guessed.
Yeah, and I'm also. I'm I'm also in dead serious about this. So when Riverbend stopped accepting Portland's garbage. And the, you know, sixty trucks every thirty minutes coming from lost trucking ceased, they're back in operation. And while strucking is, I mean, from the time I, from this intersection to the time I I hit the McMinnville city limit. Early in the morning, I'm having at least seven pass me in a fifteen-minute period.
Over on West Side or on the?
From the time I leave Carlton to go down and then on West Side, and the time I hit. Yeah, sorry.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, no, I I tracked them for years, but they're back. And whose garbage are we bringing? Because they're coming through our town and they're tearing up our roads.
So we've had numerous conversations with ODOT about numerous trucking agencies that are coming through there and cutting down to West Side or West Side. Through here. So we've been having those discussions. Um, for the West Side and what we are, West Main, sorry. What we are doing with that, I would tell your um neighbor, please subscribe to Carlton tidbits. Because over the last year, they would have seen that we've gotten one and a half million of federal dollars.
Who's Carlton tidbits?
The weekly newsletter that goes out to everybody who subscribes in our neighborhood and in our community.
It's not a Facebook thing.
It is not a Facebook thing, um, but I, the mayor has pushed out Facebook notifications. Uh, we've done it on Nextdoor, we've done it on the weekly tidbits that we've done several times.
We have money to address it?
We are working on getting the money to address it. It's a slow process that we're, we're learning through the federal government. There's a lot of strings attached to it. Um, so I, it will not be repaid next month, I can guarantee you that. But we have a substantial more amount of money, thanks to our senators.
So my question is, will I get a ticket driving down the middle of the road to avoid all the?
Take your bike. Those are Carlton speed bumps. Me too.
Well, I don't know. I just, I just redid, yeah, one of the rotors and I just, they're bad. Anyway, and it's not me, well, sure, I'll complain too. It's terrible.
Where the mayor is shaken awake at four o'clock in the morning from those frigging trucks. Believe me, we're aware of it. Yeah.
All right, well, like I say, I have had multiple people say.
So that was you with the spike strips?
Not yet. I think those were the guests in the vacation rental in front of me that were throwing them out of the street.
Yeah, the city manager's just gonna say we're talking about spike strips and harming people. We are on a public meeting.
But it was one of the folks in frustration selling their property. They're like tired of this.
Yeah. Any other comments, extreme sentiments? Or any other comments concerning sentiments, feelings?
Anything else going on? Carlton tidbits, come on.
Um with that, we would welcome a motion for adjournment with appreciation to Mr. White for the two presentations tonight.
I'll make a motion.
Motion seconded.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Adios.
Adio.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Our next meeting is the thirteenth of November, six PM or five PM, and we'll see you.
Yeah, come to that baby. Your wife's waiting for you.
Hey, she's she's in Parkin May.